Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the March 19th Board of Selectmen's meeting and call it to order. Is anybody taped in the meeting?
Pre-camped.
And? No one? Okay. At 6:00 PM, we'll have a public hearing with Joel and Sandra Plessy from J.Sand Gas to talk about their application to increase their current license to 120-gallon storage containers for the site located at 80 County Road. At 6:15, we'll meet with the Cable Advisory Committee and the Lakeville Community Access Media to discuss and vote on the Lakeville Community Access Media, which is Lake Cam, and the Middleborough Community Cable Access Media, which is M.T.C.A.M. We'll have weekly public discussion. Under Board of Selectmen Consent Agenda, we have discuss and approve increasing purchase order limits submitted by the town administrator, discuss and approve increase in ambulance rates with Chief Sylvia, the town administrator's report, approve the extension of the current Free Town Lakeville Athletic Association lease requested by Jack Taylor, sign the health insurance contract by the Health Insurance Advisory Committee, approve Hopper's personnel module for the payroll unit submitted by the town administrator, discuss the FY-19 fire budget and highway budget, and then under personnel, also, sorry Derek, discuss and adopt marijuana board of health regulations as submitted by Derek Macedo, approve new change of status form to be used by all town departments, approve new employment application, reappoint Lisa Bedeski as the animal control officer inspector, and reappoint Robert Clavekka as a veterans agent and veterans grades officer effective May 1st. We'll discuss new business in upcoming meetings, and then we'll go into executive session. So with that being said, I'll call the public hearing to order, and I will ask you guys to come down, please. And if you could read these green cards. Charlie's going to read the green cards for the record.
Jason. Jason, okay. Darren Mann, Michael St. Don, Maria Ferrara, Danielle Poole, Trustee, Sarah Chase, Durham Dunham, Karen Susan, Sandra Plessy, Patricia Nato, Michael St. Don, New Bedford Water District, Maria La Pointe, Glenn Taver, Daniel and Michelle Plessy.
Thank you. Those are the three that we did not read. Okay, and the three that were not read were ME Hawes LLC, Frank Ashley Jr., and Peter J. Dias. Is anybody here from that we called? No? Okay, with that being said, so you're here to discuss your application to increase your current license to 120,000-gallon storage unit, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So, just to start off, I'm Doug, this is Shelley Plessy, and we are representing Jay and Sandy. We actually own and operate J.Sand Gas, they are the physical owners of the property. And this is Jody Humden from Energy Consulting. Does he have any technical questions as it relates to the project?
Great. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your business and why you want the increase to 120 gallons?
Okay. So, I'm working as a third-generation propane operations in Free Town. We started back in 1976, so we're 42 years in business right now. And my grandparents actually had Free Town Gas and appliance prior to that, going back into the 50s up on Middleborough Road. Do you have paperwork with you for the application? I don't know if it had the current certificates of registration. So basically, back in, okay, back in 1981, we had applied for a certificate of registration for 30,000 gallons of propane storage, and then that was amended back in 1996 for an additional 60,000 gallons. And what the, whether it was administration error on our part, or, you know, and how it was written up, or with the town, those were supposed to have been combined for one address from 45 Millboard Road to 80 County Road, so it would have been a total of 90,000 gallons. So as you can see, there's two that every year go out, has a registration from the town clerk's office for the same address listed, but I think when the chief investigated into, the fire chief investigated into what kind of happened, one is still listed as 45 Millboard Road somewhere in some paperwork. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to increase our storage there to be able to put an additional 30,000-gallon propane tank in, in addition to one we have there now, but we also want to be able to cover whatever storage we have on-site collectively. So that's the, and as part of this process of, with Jody with consulting to get, you know, all the permits and everything in order, it was discovered that the permit, the registrations were incorrect administratively, so we're trying to get those corrected at the same time. We'd like to increase it to 120,000, just to be covered for everything. I guess moving forward and for everything that's on-site.
Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, that's pretty much it. I think the, basically somehow in back in the mid-'90s, some kind of snafu happened where the land use license was split amongst the two parcels. So really, it was one for all and then one business parcel at 80 County Road.
The property's dual-bought, next to each other.
Does the board have any questions?
So you're currently at 90,000, and all you're doing is, I mean, why don't you increase by another 30,000-gallon tank?
Correct, and kind of straighten the paperwork out that's got two registrations listing two separate amounts.
Right. But the only physical change you want to do is add one more tank?
You want to add one more tank physically, yes. And we've done a fire safety analysis that Jody's done through Energy Consulting as part of the preparation to start employing this, and then obviously meeting with the fire chief and everything that goes with that.
And you're gonna review here?
Yep.
All right.
All right. A motion from the board?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, hold on one second. Does anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns? All right. I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion that we, that we accept our application as presented.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They're all set, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for so much.
All right. Shelley, do you need these back? I think these are for you.
Yeah.
That's my, yeah.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
No worries. Okay, so since you're standing there, or sitting there, and we have five minutes left, why don't, why don't we go into your rate increases, if you don't mind?
Yep. Well, it's that time of year, the board has decided they want to increase it, and if they do, by how much? I gave you guys the latest numbers from ComStar, what they, what they recommended rates are. I also put out a small spreadsheet showing a 25% increase and a 50% increase in rates, just so you can see how it plays out. I believe last year when we met, you guys were concerned about going up too-
Too high.
Too high, too fast?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know what you want. If you want, just go by 25% until we start. If you look at the BLS rate, if you go 25%, it actually puts over what ComStar is recommended, which is the same as what Berkeley and Lakeville use for their rates. So we could actually just cap that, either go 25% up until we hit that, the ComStar recommended rate, if that works.
What was your increase last year, Chief?
25%.
We did a full 25% last year?
No, 25%.
He wanted 75. Charlie was like, "No way, that's not happening."
Chief, just on one question?
Yep.
Just, basically, out of curiosity, ALS-1 base rate and ALS-2?
Yep.
What's the difference?
What?
In actuality, that's a figure, in actuality.
ALS-2 is actually, is a little more intentional stuff. We don't do too much ALS-2 stuff. That requires like high-tech, you know, air medics and that kind of stuff, nurses.
Just out of curiosity.
What constitutes ALS base rate? Just, is it just the intervention with advanced procedures?
Yeah.
Or is there a difference between ALS-1 and ALS-2?
ALS-1 is your basic paramedic intervention.
Okay.
As you can see, we're still well below the going rates, and even that 25% bump last year, we're still down, you know, quite a bit below to our, for our neighbors. And O'Roch also chose to keep theirs the same as last year, they didn't raise it all, so they stayed with ComStar's last-year rates, whereas Berkeley and Lakeville, they just go with whatever ComStar recommends, that's what they go with. So you, it's really, it's up to the board. You guys can do nothing, you guys can go by 10%, you go by 5%, whatever you, whatever you folks want to do, as far as the rates go.
You don't have a recommendation?
I would recommend going up 25% until we max out, to hit the top of where the ComStar is. That's what I would recommend.
So you only want to go 25, up to the 1403, not all the way to the 1424?
Correct.
Right.
Just the example of the BLS rate?
Once we hit the ComStar recommended rate, which stops.
Then you're all set.
And then each year, because you look at ComStar, they go about 2% every year on their rates. So once we hit that, then we just fall into routine, or whatever they recommend, we just go with.
ComStar generates that number by an average of all its services it provides.
Correct. The top 50, they go by. I know.
Yeah, because again, the higher we go, the less people can afford it-
The more abatements we have.
The more abatements we use. So that, that's where the, you know, that's where that fine line, like where do you make that balance that makes it all equal to everybody, so?
My concern's more the people that can't afford it, that don't apply for the abatement and just, you know, don't pay something else and pay that. A lot of your older generation, that's what happens, they, they don't want to not pay a bill.
Well, what's the board's pleasure? We can keep it the same or review it next year? We can go up 10%?
I think 10% would be a fair increase.
Well, then how long is it going to take us to get up to the ComStar rates, if that's the objective?
It's going to just take a little while.
I don't know if that is an objective. I, I don't see that as an objective, but, I mean.
Are we losing, I mean, as I said last year, in my perfect world, this would come out of, out of the tax rate, but it doesn't. And are we actually missing out on insurance payments that we could by not having the rates?
Are we getting more, are we getting more upfront, and is it offset by what we're giving away in abatements? I guess that's the question, right? So if we're getting in 100,000, but we're abating 50, then we're ahead 50. But if we're not, and we're abating 150, then we're losing 50. So I guess we need to find that, what is that? Do you follow me?
We're not contracted with any insurance company, right? These are our rates, we don't have insurance companies?
These are our rates, but we have, we do have contracts with, possibly Shield.
That are less than these rates.
Of course, but yes, with Medicare, you're, obviously you're capped over, Medicare's going to pay.
Medicare just pays what they pay.
They're not going to pay. It's only with Mass Health.
And we've bound, bound all the rest of those, Medicare and Mass Health?
We do.
And that's where-
We can't, we can't balance bill Medicare, but we balance, all our other bills get sent to the, to patients, and if they choose to pay, they pay, and not, they then go on to that.
So Mass Health can't be, can't be?
I don't, Medicare cannot be.
Oh, Medicare, okay, that's, that's.
I know it's tough, I know it's an uncomfortable discussion to have, but.
You're at 25, and you're at 10?
I would say definitely 25, but we're, even if we go up to 25, we're still, overall, on the, the basic rate would be a little bit higher than, well, yeah, a little bit higher than ComStar.
No, we wouldn't go, we wouldn't go further than-
You want us to cap it at ComStar?
We want, we want to cap it at ComStar. So whatever ComStar is, that's where we would cap it. So we would never go above them.
So we would be capping the rate on basic BLS emergency.
And, and the next one down?
And, well, the next one down, we would be-
Yeah, we'd be below here, right?
Would be quite significant before that.
Right.
Yeah.
And then on the, oh, ALS rates, we would still be significantly at 25%. We're going to be less than 50, right, yeah, less than 50% of what the ComStar rates are. And again-
Most of them.
Well, yeah, I'm saying on-
Most of them will still be significantly lower?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm fine with 25, you're with 25. I just, unfortunately, it's the most vulnerable patients that are going to be the ones billed for it, but-
But we do abate them, so-
Yes. If it's the board's fault, then I'm fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think the bait, the abatement is, is involved, it's presented to them if we have severe, yet we abated rates. I don't think that's, I, I understand, Bob, and yes, I understand that some people have gotten to pay the full rate, but it'd be competitive. It's not that unreasonable, raise 25. We hadn't raised the rates in five to seven years.
Five years, maybe more than five years prior to last year's rate, so it's been a little while.
Can you not bring this forward next year, please?
ComStar's going to raise next year, too.
I'm skipping you.
I believe, though, didn't we both-
50% in two years.
I think the board voted last year, it'll be due every year, so.
I'm going to change that.
Well, I-
Make your motion, Charlie.
I'll make the motion for 25% increase.
I'll second.
I'll begrudgingly second.
I'll begrudgingly agree to that as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 6:20, and I'll call the Cable Committee up.
Next year when you bring it, can you do it after April 1st? So like I said on that side, heckle.
Reverend Dias and Mr. Wilber, can you come on down? Bruce, come on. Just like old times. I was looking all over to see if your name was on that, on that one from the pussies, but it wasn't with Barbara O'Newell.
I want you here, too. Thank you. Okay. We have received a proposal, revised proposal, from Lake Cam relative to a meeting that we had last week at, we went Thursday with the advisory committee and myself, as well as Jose, and we asked him to sharpen his pencil and give us a price based on two different options. One is having Lake Cam do both channels, which is the first column illustrating the cost associated with that. The second is remaining separate, having Lake Cam continue to do the educational portion and have M.T.M. continue to do the governmental portion. And on the basis of those, on the basis of that analysis, having Lake Cam do both channels, the approximate cost is $16,819. By having Lake Cam and M.T.M. do their things individually, both governmental and educational, the cost would be $21,819. I did have a discussion with Karen at M.T.M., and we did talk a lot, actually learned a lot from my discussion with her, and in terms of the synergy that could potentially be between M.T.M. and the regional school, it was felt that the best mix would to be, to have Lake Cam continue to do that, because it's not, they're not part of the regional school, and it seemed to be more of a natural synergy between the towns, Lakeville and the town of Free Town. So I now open the floor to the other members for their comments and, you know.
So I think what we discussed the other day, and we came to an agreement, I felt, the Cable Committee, was that we really need to delve into this a lot more. There's so many more opportunities Reverend Dias had talked about, and also Bruce, that we can go into, and you brought them to our attention, too. And I feel like we have really a great working relationship with both M.T.M. and Lake Cam, and we may want to move towards Lake Cam, but we're really not at a point where we know everything that we need to know, and we really do need another year to delve, and, I mean, that's what we decided the other day, is to try to grasp where we're going with this. Do we, do we run our own studio? Do we, you know, do we partner up with Lakeville? Do we totally, you know, go away from Lakeville and, you know, partner up more with Middleborough? But it's going to take us time, and that's why, like, you can see, I said, can't we just leave it alone for this one year and just figure out where we're going? And I'm grateful that you came back with a proposal to allow us to do that, because I think that you, you're, you guys are awesome, you're like so far ahead of us, and we are just learning, and I think that we need to take that time to figure out where we're going, and you guys can step in, too.
Yeah, for the immediate, right now-
Right.
I don't see, I don't see much of an issue, but, I mean, the last whole weekend, I've been looking at Lake Cam, Channel 20, and my assessment is it's really top-end with Lakeville, really top-end. That's my, you know-
Is that the education? Is the education?
That's the educational, you know, you're in. I mean, it's really top-end with Lakeville. For us, you continue to say that, well, we want to, we want to bring us up to the speed where Lakeville is, but man, Lakeville has got so much stuff on there, I don't know, in my opinion, that we would be up to that point, or you'd be overwhelmed.
Well, let me just say that, I'm sorry.
No, no, I want you to say that.
What you're seeing on Channel 20 is primarily high school sports currently, the winter sports, basketball from upon equip, boys and girls, Oak Alley basketball, boys and girls, and hockey from Lakers, which is a regional team, and you're seeing a little bit of UMass Dartmouth college basketball, a little bit of hockey, some of that. The other programs and, Chairman Chico brought this up, the other programs are mostly from other access centers, not from Lake Cam. Actually, we don't, we produce mostly just the schools program.
That goes on that channel.
Everything else is coming from other, other regional Massachusetts or around the country, that's where we're getting that, that program. So the calculations I had given prior were based solely on what we produce, what we actually cover, edit, and put on the air. So you're seeing a lot more on there than just what's happening in the high schools.
I understand that portion.
I appreciate what you do, you have done excellent work, and I have watched the channel also, you know, in, on the, on the channel, there is, you know, fire prevention, smoke, and I guess, I don't know if you get from Mass Access and download some different programs, so it could be. So, we think, so I agree with Bruce in this thing, the percentage of Free Town, of representation of Free Town is very limited. I don't know what percentage that would be. If you go there, sometimes you don't see Free Town, you know, if you use, all Lakeville, if you just go by, you might not even know anything about Free Town. It would be nice to have something rolling, you know, about the town, you know, bringing them to that station. You have some things, but, you know, overall, I think it's excellent, excellent work that you do. I think the Middleborough is tremendous, you know, and I thank you for coming to the meeting, but this, we, Bruce and I were talking also, we would like somebody to help us get membership also to Mass Access, because Free Town, if you look at the map, we are not part of it. And as you guys know, Mass Access, now anytime they download anything, it's like in the cloud, you can get almost any single program, and it can come down into our community, but we are not. And I was wondering, how much is the fee for, to join Mass Access, you know, to be represented under Free Town?
I don't know, Free Town, could join.
Okay.
I think you could, it's about, it's, in this case, would be, I think, $100 a year. We pay 150, because our revenues are higher.
Well, I think you can get individual membership for 150 bucks, and that's what I was, I was thinking of doing it myself, but as an individual, you can do it.
If you, if you want to learn about this industry, that's a great place to start.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Cat's down the road, I mean, we got a lot to learn, I think.
I was reading the figures, and I couldn't understand it completely. The last time we were at the meeting, we just asked a simple question, you know, if you go on for a whole year, what would the number be for us to continue with you, just for the educational program? And I didn't, I couldn't figure it out completely, so I just was wondering-
Page two. On page two of the sheet I gave you, I'll give you a proposal for first year, $10,000, and second year, $12,000, third year, $15,000, that's just for education channel. And that'll bring the disparity and the gap, and close that to a point where I can defend it. Okay? The question about Free Town program, Free Town Elementary, we, since our inception in 2012, we've had some difficulties getting into the schools, even the high school at times, to, to record programs or record plays, because there are certain students who have, have not signed waivers to have media cover them for reasons that it's dangerous to them. So there are times when we would like to cover something at the elementary schools or middle schools, and we can't, because we're not allowed to. Also, at the high school, we are required to let principals see our programming before we put it on the air.
And at upon equip.
And you were saying to us, just for our publics to understand, that the studio in the high school, I, do you have access to it? It's a, can you please explain to the public, you know, what you-
Prior to Lake Cam's existence, the high school and the regional school district, as it was then, the regional school, high school, claimed ownership of the, both the equipment and, and closed the studio. The cameras are still there, they're in the closet. Unfortunately, that space is, is not dry, so we don't know what condition those cameras are in. They're, they're old analog SD cameras. And you told me that the equipment that was in the control room is no longer there?
I didn't say that.
Someone, someone mentioned-
I think David.
You visited and didn't see anything in the control room?
I didn't, I had heard of that, I didn't know.
Okay. The, the school department claimed ownership of it, and so we have no control over that.
Are you saying that the basement is wet, you have water in the basement?
Yeah, Lakeville Cable Advisory Committee installed a, an air conditioning system to dry it out, and it's still going to do the job.
And some of the equipment is from Free Town purchased, that equipment, is that correct?
That's prior to me being involved at all, but that's, I, the numbers I've heard is 75K was Lakeville, 25K was Free Town. Does that sound about right?
It sounds about right, yeah.
And that's the equipment that was, was in there. I don't know if it's there now. I, the last time I was down there, I was told we were using it as choir room.
So there's no training for the students or programming for students?
We've been, we've been doing internships on a limited basis at upon equip, and we've also, cooperation, O'Roch's Community Television have started a club over at Oak Alley, and they've produced now three programs coming out of there.
My last question, I guess, for me, is that the $10,000, what, what services, I noticed the education, can you articulate what you're going to do for the town of Free Town, please?
For the town of Free Town directly?
And the educational aspect?
Last, last year, 2017, we produced 198 programs, educational programs produced by Lake Cam. These are the ones where you're seeing actual student activity at upon equip, mostly at Oak Alley now, and that's primarily, and we have covered a few events at, at Free Town Elementary, a choir, and there was a dance troupe a couple of years ago, and, and danced. So we've covered a couple of things, though, that we've been invited, when we've been allowed it.
But you're saying that there's a decline in the amount of production that you can do due to the access of the students because of the media release waivers that have not been signed?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
You also do school committee meetings and-
Yes, school committee.
Fin, fin com meetings.
Fin com meetings. And the school committee meetings in particular, because there are so many people that we have to mic, and the number of cameras we need, we've been doing with two, we have done it with three, and at one time, four. That is a really expensive production, especially when we do live switching at that, close to $500 to do one of those, so.
The audio quality's excellent.
Thank you. I probably missed some pushing good audio.
Bruce, do you have any other questions, concerns, comments?
Not right now, I mean, just speaking with the committee and the media, my teeth are just, you know, it's-
Yeah, me, too. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff that we haven't even touched the iceberg to understand.
It continues in the back of my mind, and I know, I've lived in the past, but, you know, in 1996, when I was on the board, we had a studio over at Berkeley, and I went by, I happen to go by there today, and gorgeous go by and not stop there, but I just, I just, you know, we had a studio that we went there, we did our own taping, we did debates there, and we also did Middleborough also. And I'm wondering, whatever happened to that stuff? And I'm sure it's outdated at this point, but-
I can give you a little bit of an update on that, but they're building a new studio on Adelford.
Berkeley is.
Berkeley is. They have been for a while, but it's all volunteer- Berkeley is, they have been for a while, but it's all volunteer, and they're building, and I don't know the number, I'm sorry, but if you contact.
Cause I thought we were, we were involved with, we were involved with Berkeley and Somerset, I think it was, or that region, they crossed the bridge.
I think that we've, what I've seen is, I think we've gotten away from that, because now that it's more Berkeley, Somerset, you know, with their regional school district, and I think that was prior to us being fully regionalized with the school district. So, now that we're fully regionalized, I, I do, I do think that we're more married in that sense for education. My, my fear, well, I have two things, first of all, we talked the other day about Old Colony and how they're doing their studio, and I think that that would be great to be able to try to get in, into that a little bit too, go ahead.
They, they have, currently have a room, it's not really a studio, but they've been using it as a studio. I don't know if they'll have an actual program there, and if they'll build out a studio that's a little more accommodating.
Right.
But they have recorded three programs there, so.
Right, so if they're up and coming and we are just learning, and maybe, who, maybe who wants to get in on the ground floor?
I just have a problem, I, I just have a problem with the technical end of it, cause I, I mean, the way I took my notes the other day, there was, you know, M-CAS goes to Comcast, you guys go to Comcast. And I'm wondering, now there's three channels involved, because we got nine, right?
That's, is that government?
Yeah, I think that is, then you got twenty, and then there's another one.
Public channel.
As well.
Should be ninety-five.
So, you're looking at, yeah, ninety-five, so you're looking at all of those going into Comcast, and I'm, in, you know, my end, I'm seeing, how the hell does that happen, you know?
Yeah, I don't understand that.
And then you throw, then you throw in the fact about, uh, mass access, now how did that filter into the whole picture? You know, so I got a lot to learn.
Well, the other part of it too, is that our contract with Comcast expires in twenty twenty, and there's a lot of opportunity from our side to increase the percentage that is paid to us, which would give us revenues to do the kind of things that we might be interested in doing, such as having our own studio, buying equipment, uh, doing, paying for additional programming, you know, so.
Thank you.
There's a whole bunch of options there.
Also, we're gonna be working on our, you know, contract in two twenty, but also different channels, we'd be able to potentially have our own few different channels and representation and all that, you know? I think that would be important, we got, we have some negotiation, forty-five percent they usually give the communities for it all, you know? But even though you've been excellent, you have great access, you're ahead of the game, if you can educate us and stay with us, um, maybe we can work together and do something great in the future.
Yeah, I also wanna say the same thing about Middleborough, because they've been super too, uh, this is a point of information when I was talking to Karen. They have had an escalator clause in their contract for the last five years, where they could have risen up, no, based on the cost of inflation, uh, their rate beyond the five thousand, but they continue to charge us the five thousand dollars, so. And, you know, the workers that have, that have manned the cameras and the quality of the work for the government meetings has been superb, and we've got a good relationship with them, and I'd be like to see that happen again, continue.
And I'd like to follow up, also the grace period that, that they can has given us, the Middleborough.
Oh, absolutely.
That has been tremendous, we wanna say thank you for extending your grace period and coming in this, this manner.
So, the numbers that you calculated, David?
Yes.
It's just the twenty-one, eight, nineteen, for two thousand and eighteen, now it go from April first to?
Well, actually, we go, it's, because we have a pay, so it's, it's actually January one, two thousand and thirty-four.
Okay.
Just prorate that, but.
Yeah.
But that would be the number we're taught that.
Yes, so.
Only for this year.
Yes, for this year.
Okay, and I think we can.
Now, it all depends on how you wanna do that, if you wanna do, you know, Lakeham individually for both, or you wanna keep, continue our current relationship with Middleborough and with Lakeview.
Well, in my opinion, my feeling is I think we should keep M-Cam right now, and Lakeham as well, until, until at least the end of both of them, so we can get a better, at least I can get a better understanding.
Me too, I, I'm with you on that, it's gonna take us about six months to get into this.
Now that the, now that the committee is reconstituted and we have, we're getting, you know, ready to negotiate the contract, and we have some ideas there regarding that, uh, that we've all discussed, and, and I think that it's a great opportunity to, for us to actually start taking a look at, you know, things that we can do in town for the town residents of Free Town.
All right. So, your recommendation, the cable committee's recommendation would be the twenty-one, eight, nineteen, um, with Lakeham and McCam?
Yes. It is for one year, right?
One year, we're gonna go year by year from now, just until the contract is, and then at that point, we'll see, well, where are we, what have we learned, are there, you know, synergies between the different, uh, you know, agencies or, you know, entities, and see how that works.
And Bruce brought up a good point the other day, is that we don't really have full representation on, a, a board or a committee, and you had brought that up except for Mr. Lubin, um, that, you know, those are other things that we'd wanna get involved in, if, if that's the direction that we're gonna go into.
We, we have, um, discussed with two other people, um, hoping on our board before, when Mr. Lubin's come on board, um, one is in the industry, and everyone is well-known to everyone here, um, but those people just didn't have the time to join us at that time.
Okay, but you still have opportunities for.
Yeah, but it's naturally up to the board to decide how many more members to bring on.
Understood. Understood.
Those meetings, they are the public.
They are, they are, they're quarterly, next one will be the last, the fifth Monday in April, at Lakeville Public Light, at seven P M. Would you like to come? Please do.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, look for, um, a vote of the board, which way to go? After listening.
After listening and having the recommendation from the cable commission, even though it's slightly higher, I'll make a motion to approve for one year, twenty-one, eight, nineteen, for Lakeham and M-Cam.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The term on that is to the end of the year, prorated?
Yeah, we, we are prorated one year.
And then we start over in January?
Well, and you kinda gave us like what your three-year plan is, so I think that, I think we'll be talking to you more often than not, okay?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Unfortunately, we came really kinda late into this whole thing, we were already up to the deadline, and we really, I apologize for that.
No.
It was very difficult to fit the type of services we're doing in Lakeville into a s- a very small budget.
That's a problem, right.
Again, anytime, could you give me a call and I'll answer any questions, if I can't answer any.
Well, we thank you for your service.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you.
On the other, on another note, we, we really need to, you know, organize, you know, find out where we're going, because, uh, I think we need to set up some goals, where we wanna be before now and probably December, and meet a little bit ahead of time.
I, I agree.
December, right?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Exactly.
I agree.
You know, but, you know, just getting on the board, I really think that we need to meet, you know, as much as we can, I should say, and then come up with, with a, with a goal, uh, we need to achieve by the end of, like you had mentioned about our own studio, or whatever, or.
Thank you, and Mass Access.
Yeah, Mass Access, and finding out how that.
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I got business, but do you wanna call me tomorrow? Yeah, you're around tomorrow? You wanna meet at the conference? Yeah, yeah, we'll meet at the conference, you tell me. Perfect, all right, ten o'clock, uh, nine, nine's good, nine, do you want this? Yeah, that is, all right, you will. Okay, discuss and approve increased purchase order limit estimated by the town administrator.
Okay, um, this, uh, item came up as a result of a discussion at a couple of our upon a meetings, and we've discussed it also a couple of times with the finance team, uh, just basically to get a sense on what the issue was and why we should move the amount up. At our meeting on March seventh, the finance team voted to recommend, well, didn't vote, it's unvoted voting, uh, felt that the one thousand dollar limit was too small, and that the purchase order amount should be raised to three thousand dollars. This is predicated on a couple of different things, uh, one is that many of the routine purchases that were being made within the one thousand dollar limit, uh, they were already, uh, they, they had already had an invoice and had cards and purchased, which is a purchase order system. Because you're supposed to gain the approval of your, of the authority prior to actually acquiring the good or the service. Uh, it's felt that by increasing the threshold, um, it creates, it'll create an incentive for the department heads to seek prior approval of the purchase order before ordering the goods and services. Since there are few purchases that will be need to be made under, uh, this, uh, number, uh, as a result of it being a higher number. Thirdly, um, it basically ties into the idea that it's a sound business practice within thirty B, uh, in terms of the proc- procurement of goods and services, and it falls neatly in, within that scope. And finally, um, the revision to the current purchase order form will allow us to do, follow best practices, and will specify both the terms and conditions of the transaction. So, overall, it's felt by all of the parties on the finance team, as well as a number of department heads feel that, uh, the three thousand dollar purchase order limit would be better for, um, the town and for, uh, doing sound business practice in the town.
What's a board's pleasure?
I'd go along with your recommendation.
Yeah.
I'll make that as a motion, I'll most, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal as submitted by the town administrator to increase our spending limit from one thousand to three thousand prior to.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna, um, ask that I turn this over to the board of house, cause is Derek still here?
Go with him.
I don't think he needs to be here, so, um, I'll, if, if the board doesn't mind, I'll take them out of, um, so he can go home, are you all right with that?
Chairman's right.
Thanks, I just feel like he's hanging around and, um, then we'll go into budgets and we'll do the rest of the stuff after.
We don't want Derek hanging around.
Okay.
So, um, proposing, I received an email last week, uh, from the C C C, basically giving us a draft regulation on retail marijuana. Their feeling is that it behooves the cities and towns to, um, just to accept this as a placeholder. Just to accept this as a placeholder, basically, in case a retail establishment were to challenge anything, we have something in place before a deadline of April first. Since we got this put on the agenda today, we got an email from our attorneys, they've looked over the draft, they made a couple of recommendations, they were not as sold on the idea that this needs to be in place by April first. Um, my thought was, it can't hurt to put it in place before, uh, the April first deadline, we could possibly wait and see what the results of the, uh, vote on the twenty-fifth are. Cause the point could be moot at that point, if we end up voting to not have any retail, then we have a placeholder that really is doing nothing. Um, if we do vote to put one in, it wouldn't hurt to maybe have a placeholder in place now, but it may also not hurt to do it on the April third meeting. Um, so, at that point, it's the board's pleasure.
I want more time to look this over, that's my personal thing, um, and especially now that I know that council had some red lines on here.
Yeah, the, the red lines were, I, it really wasn't anything earth-shattering, more just, you know, what would this definition be, um, if we were to accept it, what would our penalty, like, the penalties in this are very, actually, they're completely blank. Um, so, if the vote went that we did have a retail establishment, there was interest, now before we open, we would have to decide, you know, what would penalties be, would it be a flat fee of a hundred dollars per violation, or would we do staggered fees of, you know, fifty, then a hundred? Uh, that's mostly what the red line items were, just like little touch points that we may wanna show up a little bit, but it really wasn't anything to, you know, I don't agree with this, I don't agree with that.
And what was their reason for saying that they're not steadfast in that April first deadline?
He just feels like that, like we would still have, if, the example is, if an establishment has two violations, more than two violations in a calendar year, they would be subject to closure per these regulations. By the April first deadline, if we were to have a place, they have a third violation, we shut them down per these regulations, they wouldn't really have an avenue to challenge it. If we did it after April first, they may have, our council's saying that may not necessarily be the case, the reason why, I didn't quite get an email, but he, he wasn't feeling quite as strong about that April first deadline.
Okay. All right, that's a good time.
Okay, um, my own, my personal opinion here is, if we wrote in regulations now, they're placeholder, Derek said, come April third, we can revote. I, I don't see harm in putting the regulations in, and I, I think we're being extra cautious by putting the regulations in, that's, that's my feel.
What's our next meeting after this?
Will be the April second.
April second, April third?
Um, as, as far as.
We're proposing a second meeting on March twenty-sixth, just in the budgets, and if that would be something that, that's on.
If, if, at least it needs, or somebody needs more time to review, that's fine, we can do it then.
On the twenty-sixth, he wants to put another meeting on the twenty-sixth, at least we'll get, yeah, we'll have it in before the deadline, but then it'll give us all time to read into it more, do you mind?
My, my opinion, my opinion on it is, I don't mind putting it in place, um, if it, even if it fails, doesn't mean, um, somebody can't do a write-in campaign and put it on for the next ballot and do another ballot initiative, everything will be great, we have zoning in place, we'll have rules, regulations in place, so if something pops up somewhere down the line, everything's already in place, so.
Yeah, no, I don't mind, I just haven't really read it, and I haven't read the red, uh, red lines, so what's going on, on the twenty-sixth, through the board to help share? Perfect.
And then that would also give you the ability of knowing how, how the vote turned out.
How the vote went.
Yeah.
As well.
But I think it makes sense just to have it in place, even if the vote doesn't turn out, and it's pro, it's prohibited, I think you'd have it in place.
Especially in, in, at this stage where it's literally just a placeholder, it, it's not really doing any harm to, to just add it there.
And again, we can make these more restrictive if we want to.
Absolutely, yeah, and that, that's a whole different conversation.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of the red line changes were.
Yeah, not really.
Section L, it just, it's that sites where in the Mass Law things are, that kinda stuff, it wasn't, like you said, nothing ground.
Getting more, getting more restrictive is a whole different conversation, this is just to have some groundwork in place.
You might wanna see, if you can, do, call some neighboring communities, see what they're doing for fines, penalties, that, are they doing a flat fee, three hundred dollars, are they doing, and how they doing, or maybe even talk to K P, and see what they, what their recommendations are on those.
From what I've seen.
So, we have some, the pop in those lines.
Most cities and towns have been going with whatever their tobacco rates are, so if their tobacco rates have a flat fine, that's what they've been going with, um, but I can definitely call around, concrete numbers.
Perfect, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Do you guys wanna do budgets now?
Uh, sure, is that what's next, do you wanna finish the consent agenda and then do budgets?
Do you wanna do that? Okay. We wanna do the budgets at the end, okay?
Yeah.
All right, um, town administrators' report?
I don't have too much, um, first off, I wanna thank, uh, Lake Safari, the M T Highway, for their outstanding response and dedication to duty during our last snowstorm, it was a pretty significant storm, and they did an excellent job in, um, taking care of the town and, uh, making it safe. I appreciate that, and the board, and the town. I appreciate that and the board and the townspeople appreciate that, so thank you. Second, I did have an inquiry regarding a company interested in locating a solar field on our transfer station land and I've had some consultation with council regarding that. And what we had talked about was the process by which we would have to approach that if that was something that were to happen. And one of the first steps that we need to do is to have a, an article on town meeting authorizing the board to lease that land out for a specific purpose, being solar fields, and then develop an RFP to allow various and sundry companies to bid on the land. So I guess I'm just throwing it out here now just to get a sense from the board as to whether that's something that there is some interest and if there is, then I can prepare a town meeting article to accomplish at least the first step of that.
I would say that, I mean, here's land that is basically useless and if we can come up with a use for it, I think that's a valid idea.
Yep.
All right.
Second.
I'll move forward. Second issue is I was gonna make a recommendation to the board to see if they'd be willing to meet on 3/26/18, which is next Monday, to try to do more of the budget so we can get the budget process moving along and any other sundry, I don't want it to end up being a whole world meeting in terms of other items ending up, but more so for the budget.
Yeah, that's fine. We already said yes, so.
Okay.
Where we adding things to it?
Ally, no more, we're not adding anymore.
Besides all the other stuff.
That's it.
Okay. Perfect. All right, approve extension of current FLAA lease as requested by Jack Taylor. Does anybody hear from the town? Okay. Does everybody have a chance to look that over?
I did, same as last year, 1 million, 3 million, and we are included as additionally insured on the policy.
All right, everybody all set?
We should be listed though, I see only the, County Lakeville is currently listed. We should be listed on the certificate of liability insurance. They gave us a copy of Lakeville or something instead.
Oh, they must've gave us the, instead, all right. So can you just make sure they send us the right one? We're all set. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, sign health insurance contract as recommended by the Health Insurance Advisory Committee.
We did have a meeting on March 9th with the Insurance Advisory Committee as well as with Meyer, our insurer, and they proposed a 7.56% increase in our insurance rates as well as a 0.86 on our dental rates. The Insurance Committee, Insurance Advisory Committee recommended the acceptance of those rates.
Do I motion to sign the contract?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approve Harper's Personnel Module as submitted by town administrator, gave it the motion.
Okay, we have been meeting about this individually as a group as well as have been, has been part of the discussions we've had on the finance team relative to Harper Paywell Services and their module for personnel. And one of the things that we have been dealing with is that we need a way to accurately capture timekeeping data and to, you know, manage certain routine tasks such as approving timesheets, correcting timesheets, responding to timesheet requests, managing schedules and workflows for our employees. This module will allow us to do that. It's going to integrate with our current system and we are, we're still debating the hardware portion of it in terms of how, there are several options. One is that the employee can log in on their smartphone. We also have the option of purchasing a time clock. We have a third option of doing it through a timesheet. The cost approximately will be, it's $3.25 per employee per month. As a result, the cost, including the email generator and border and the integrated document storage, is approximately $1,830, however, that'll be prorated over the next few months and will be built into the budget. We will have some additional capital costs in the form of a time clock, a tablet, and then we also are going to need some training for the employees on how to use the system. But overall, the, the general feeling from the staff that have been involved, they feel that this is a good way to implement some change regarding, you know, certain vacation scheduling. There are controls, user controls that can be built into the system. For example, now if an employee decides on Friday they want to take a vacation day, they can now just request that the supervisor grant them that day. What we can do in, under this system is we can now say there's a control that you have to give seven days prior notice and if they try to enter into the computer with less than seven days, it bounces out. There is an override function if there's an emergency or that kind of thing. But it allows us to plan out our schedules in our offices more efficiently and to actually have some control over the use of comp time and vacation time and personal time, allowing them to be scheduled versus being forced upon the department.
Plus it also will benefit for the employee because they'll have everything in front of them. I have X amount of vacation days and if it's wrong, then they'll know right away. You know what I mean? Like say by contract, we give somebody five more days and it hasn't carried over. It's easy to see where it is and then they just bend down from it, so it's kind of a good system.
Now, the employees, you said it's 325, is, does that include fire, police, or highway? Or is that just?
No, fire, police, highway, or just fire and police.
Just fire and police excluded.
Library will be included also.
So do I have a motion to approve the Harper's Personnel Module?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, do you want to go to personnel or do you want to do the budgets?
Personnel, I have to take.
Go ahead.
Personnel, we have employee change of status reform and submitted by the town administrator. You'd like to change it?
Essentially what we've done is we, Tim and Ally met and made some changes to the form to make it more efficient. A column for the number of hours, education incentive, and extra pay, total inserted. This way, the board, when it does approve the hours in the town accountant treasurer's office, know how many hours that they are working with this. Second, it, from Ally's perspective, she needs to receive the change of service form before the increases is effective, having been, then, that sometimes she gets those forms in for employees from departments after the change has been implemented. So the intent of the form is to make the process a little bit more streamlined and to allow the timely implementation of the change of status forms so that they're approved in sync with, in sync with the, the changes that are being proposed.
Do I have a motion to, oh, sorry. I'm on a roll, come on, let's go.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Harry Noneall in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the change in the application.
This is a pretty simple change. One is that under federal law, beginning July 1st, we can't include a social security number on our employment applications, nor can we ask for previous employer's wage data. So you can't do either of those two things. The second page is some additional things that we liked, that we found on other job applications that we felt were important to incorporate onto ours, some of which being, you know, the, you know, the obligation to fill out the application properly, the requirement for core rechecks, certain things regarding, I can find that on the application here, but you have to, I'm sorry. You know, an understanding that if they apply for the job, they're required to prove their identity and legal authority under the I-9 form, which is a federal law, basically saying that we allow the verifiable use of volunteer work as part of the job application process, that the application remains valid for 45 days, certain things like that that we feel benefit the town in terms of providing an insight into the potential applicant that allows us to make the best choice.
One thing, did everybody have a chance to look it over and read the, the small print and the fine print?
Yeah, what did you want to bring to our?
Still, second to last, third to last paragraph talks about our ability to do a background check. The only thing I'd like to see additional to that is if they're required to have a driving, driving of vehicle is required, then we should also do a driving history where, you know, van drivers, highway department people, if they're required to drive, we should at least have a, you know.
Maybe have a verification of CDL? If that's a requirement of the job?
Yes.
Like proof of, of actually having.
That would be part of the requirements to hold the job.
Part of the requirements of the, of the bargaining.
And we do the, the hiring list, what they have to maintain throughout the course of employment. It just here, we, you know, we might have a van driver that may have extensive driving record that may not, might disqualify them if we don't look into it.
That's a great point.
So any recommendations, motions?
I'll make the motion. We accept the application with the amended statement as.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Harry Noneall in favor?
Aye.
Certificate of Appointment for Lisa Podowski, Animal Control Officer, Inspector of Animals, effective May 1st, 2018, term expires May April 30th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Any discussion on the motion? Harry Noneall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Certificate of Appointment for Robert Claveka, Veterans Agent slash Veterans Grave Officer, effective May 1st, 2018, term expires April 30th, 2019.
I'll make the motion. Make that appointment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Harry Noneall in favor?
Aye.
And that's it for personnel. As always, quick and easy. Lisa, why don't we now do budgets?
Yes, thank you. So, Fire and Highway, you're up.
Who's like first?
I can draw a straw.
Go, straw.
Do you have a quorum or are you just here to witness and?
Ask questions.
Ask questions? So, what, okay. The problem is, George, you, you can't be here as the chair of the finance committee, you can be here as a president, but you can't be here as the chair of the finance committee. That's, because you don't have a quorum, so. I don't have a problem with asking questions at all. Who's going first?
I would.
Okay.
Good choice.
I will ask, George, are you, are we gonna do this separately for the whole thing or just until you guys are late?
Well, we won't have a quorum probably till after the election. That's an issue.
So we're, we're probably gonna meet, but we're not gonna ever decide. Personally, I don't think we're gonna decide on which way we're going until the end, so if we have additional questions, we'll probably ask them back in anyway. You know what I mean? So.
You tell me if you want to do.
Yeah, so, no, I, I think, I think it works well when both boards meet, the finance committee and the board of selectmen meet together. Not that we always agree, but at the end of it, at least we all have our questions on the table. And I think that that works best instead of, you know, them coming in double time because you'd be coming in for us and the finance committee at the same time and you might get a lot of the same questions twice. So if we could streamline it, probably be better. But I understand you probably won't get a quorum until after, so we'll probably, maybe we'll try to do some of the smaller departments first and keep the bigger ones for when you have a, a quorum. Does that work?
I'm sure.
Okay. All right. That being said, hi, Chuck. Anything you want to highlight on here?
Ask for a level funding budget, that's what we supply. I don't think I asked for anything. Speak.
Lot of contractual stuff. So you only increases your 3% over contractual, basically?
And then the early incentive for the retirement.
Well, that's, even that's contractual.
Like I said, operating's all the same, everything's the same.
She's right behind me.
Kim, did we put that, the incentive in a separate line item? Remember, so we don't try to get it confused with the rest of the budget so it doesn't carry over for the following year?
Well, not the incentive, the sick leave buyout.
Okay.
Not the incentive because that is just, that was not added in. I believe I did set up a separate.
Yes.
I did for Fire. Well, I wouldn't treat you guys any differently on Highway, so.
The second item up on page 068.
That's sick leave.
Yes, sick, sick leave buyout.
Are you talking sick leave buyout?
Both.
Retirement.
Yeah, so the problem is, is that when you, you, it stays in there and then next year you look at the budget and if.
That employee's gone, it's still in the budget.
It's still in the budget and you're like, oh, how, you know what I mean? Like, so it's one of those things that needs to be flagged sort of, so next year we know that his budget will more than likely not, but could go down by $6,700.
I don't, your budget, that really doesn't reflect except for last year when you had Andy leave, but not Andy, Billy.
Oh, Billy.
Billy leave. With your budget up and increase with, with your deputy, that'll change. So I see your point.
So it's in a separate account? It's in a separate line item when you look at the printed out budget? That's in the accounting system. It's in a separate line item. So although they.
Even though it's not on here, it is in a separate line item in the master.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So Kim, you know what I think would be helpful is that when we do the budgets every year, we have those notes. If we hide that column, if we save that column from year to year, then it's almost like a, a history of things.
Okay. We can do that?
Thanks. Because I know I do take notes, but I mean, sometimes, you know, notes get lost and we don't know why we're doing a certain thing and it would be easy for us to just say, oh yeah, that's right, we did that for that reason, so. Do you guys have any other questions with Highway?
Nope.
Equipment?
We want capital, we ask for a tractor for 32 and change to replace a 1966 Ford tractor.
Okay.
We get it, great, we don't, oh well.
So the tractor would be used for?
Everything, roadside mowing, mowing, soccer field, baseball field, the landfill, that type of stuff.
All right, perfect.
It will have a bucket on the front of it and it's going to be utilized to snow removal and that type of stuff. It's just a general piece of furniture. The tractor that it's going to replace is a nineteen sixty-six. Has looked a good life. But it's going to go off faster.
Surplus, are we doing surplus with, for that or are you just going to dump it somewhere?
I got, I got fifteen million dollars worth of crap in my backyard, so.
You have an option in there.
We'll put a little bit more in the bag just because it adds to the character.
Staffing wise, you're okay?
Perfect.
All right.
I want anything more.
All right. Any questions?
Nope.
You are good.
I got somebody at home waiting for me and she's way better looking than you.
Fire. George, sorry, did you have any questions because you didn't go up? I'm sorry.
You're up.
Okay, well, it's basically, it's almost a level funded budget from, it actually went down by almost forty-five thousand because of the sick time buyout was pulled out to deputy retirement and because he's, he's on the high end, our step on firefighters is going to replace him, is a low, low rate of pay, so. Because actually it's a decrease in, even without the sick time buyout store, it's a twenty thousand dollar decrease in budget.
So the seventeen thousand one fifty for certification renewal, what is that?
That's for EMT, paramedics.
Okay, so what, then next year you don't do it, correct?
Right, next year will be the, yes.
So the reciprocal year?
Yes.
So then, so do you follow, so next year the budget goes down by an additional seventeen, maybe?
Yes, because some guys are off.
Right.
So depends what year they, they certify.
Yep, okay.
Would it be easier to carry like eight, eight pie every year?
I just, I always zero base everything, then just build up the budget from zero.
Is there anything else there?
There's not really many highlights for this year. It's just.
No capital expenditures or anything?
Well, the capital is, is in June one for a station for down in the summit and then we gotta, we gotta have a chat about the.
Chat? I love when you just throw that in.
We're going to talk about the aerial ladder at some point.
Yeah.
It's getting old.
Agree.
And it's getting weak.
It failed its last inspection, they had to do a pay before it was passed, so I think that's a.
So I don't, I don't know what the best option is. Right now we got a grant pending. I highly doubt the feds are going to give a million dollars to replace the aerial ladder.
For a city, town this size, it's.
Probably not, but in the event that they don't, which is probably not going to happen, I think we should put at least a hundred thousand aside and try to get a newer used one. Similar to what Berkeley, Lakeville, Rochester, now, pusher just did one. And there's, there's some good ladders out there, so. But that won't be until the fall. What the, what the grant thing, work its way out, then we'll, it's going up in there. And the ladder's going to be tested again. It was supposed to be tested this month, but I think because of the weather, they pushed it off to April.
So you want to wait till the October meeting?
We have to wait at least until the grant period. If we buy one now.
No, we can approve the money in this budget.
Yeah, can you put, I want it in the budget now because in the fall, we're trying to get away from supplementing budgets in the fall.
Right.
So if we put it in now, we know that that money's earmarked, okay?
So if it falls through, then we can just go through the, proceed, the project procedure?
So that'll have to.
So you want to add a hundred thousand to the capital budget?
Yeah.
For the purchase of a used aerial ladder.
Nice round number, is that nice? Ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand seventeen thousand.
But you want something that's more.
For Kim's life, a hundred thousand, which is a nice, easy round number.
And the ladder we're using, Johnny Gage, we're just always using it, same truck.
He says seventy-four or seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
That's an emergency television show reference for those that are not paramedics.
You showing your age?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Just would like to hear from you. What's the situation? You requesting, I think I read, an increase in the ambulance fees?
We did that, I guess.
That's done?
Done.
Okay. Now, do you still have to practice that any private billing you don't do? Is that right? That was an issue years ago? If a pa, if a patient didn't, was self-paid?
I'm not sure, I was saying, do we bill people who are self-paid?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you do? Okay.
George, we, every month we bank on bills that are not covered by insurance.
They're people that can't pay.
Can't pay?
But they are billed.
It's not automatic, it's just.
No.
Someone is.
They bill and if they can show they can't pay, then we have to bill.
That was really a good question. That was one of them. The other thing is, do you know offhand how much the billing offsets the cost of the ambulance service?
About four and five a year.
And what is the cost of run? That's, that's your receipts?
Yeah, well, your, your budget is for fire and ambulance. I didn't, I didn't bring it all up for you, but I.
His budget's one point one million and he's getting almost half of it back in just in ambulance.
Okay. Last time we spoke, if I understood you correctly, you staff the stations for ambulance runs?
Well, no, we staff it for fire and ambulance. Whichever call comes in, that's the call they answer.
Okay, but I, I thought it was EMTs that staffed the station.
No.
That's what I thought I understood you to say.
No, not really. Firefighters, paramedics, they do both jobs. If a fire comes in, they go on fire truck.
Okay.
If an ambulance comes in, they go on the ambulance.
Okay.
Twenty-four seven?
Yeah. Okay. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but what is your total budget?
One point one million. This year's submission was one, one, one million one hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven is what he. No, I'm, I'm sorry. This year, that was last year, it's down one million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand one twenty-six is this year's request.
So basically net, net, after billing and receipt, your cost is about a half a million dollars?
Yeah. And we're getting twenty-four hour days.
I don't know how we, I don't know how we compare the other departments. I don't know how much the school offsets their budget, how much the police offsets their, their budget, I don't know. Does highway offset their budget? Does the highway department offset their budget? I don't know, I don't either.
I, I don't think they can bill that much.
So we're running a fire department. We're running a full-time fire department at five thousand dollars.
Roughly, five, six, five, almost six hundred. And it's a twenty-four hour day, full-time fire department budget. I, we got one last year.
Hey, you got one last year?
Yeah.
Are you, how are you in that area though?
Right now we're holding our own. I think as more, the problem we have right now, Lisa, is that our new young firefighter paramedics on the call department are being stolen by other departments.
Have you ever looked into a safe grant for personnel?
A safer grant?
Yeah, a safe grant.
Safer grant, yeah.
Safer grant.
I have not. I don't, they don't usually give them to small towns, but.
Concrete company.
Yeah, I mean, because the problem is, is the big cities now are turning them back in because they don't want to make the commitment to keep the personnel after three years. And the problem is if it goes, you get the grant, but then you have to absorb all the costs down the road.
We don't quite, quite qualify most of the HUD grants that the biggest cities forward to the depressed areas.
But I think as, as time goes on, you're going to see as more urban departments keep turning them in, well, the small departments will be able, eligible for them.
All right. George, anybody?
I was just sort of curious, you're losing firemen to other towns, did I heard you say?
Call firefighters.
Call fire, oh, call.
Yeah, they're getting hired, they're getting hired full-time.
Oh.
So, and usually requires them to move, George. Like we had one kid got picked up by Stowe and another kid got picked up by Blackstone and a third kid just got picked up by Seco, something like one of those. You can't blame them. They want to go to Korea, they want to go to, who are highest first, get them.
Work for you, work for me?
The board, anything else? No? Okay, we're good. Thank you. Just, can you just want to add that hundred thousand in capital equipment for him?
Okay.
Thank you.
Doesn't mean you're getting it, it just means it's happening.
We're trying our best to keep that old girl running. But now, but now's the time. We're not under the gun.
No, I hear you.
But first, let me think, you have a roof, so.
Correct.
All right. Anything else for the board? No? Is there a need to go into executive session?
Do you want to discuss negotiations or excel?
Uh, yeah, let's do both. Do you want to make the motion? Yeah, you can.
You could do this in the board so it clears.
Ms.
Uh, sorry.
You're going, you're going into second.
Yes, is there anything you need?
Again, a question again. One of our members feels very strongly that there should be at least one representative from the finance committee to be involved in the executive sessions you have when you're discussing pay rates. I don't know if you just want to take that.
Well, we can talk about, we're going into executive session tonight, so we can discuss that while we're in the executive session.
It's not, the committee needs to know about, for whatever reason.
Yep. We'll discuss it. Thank you. Hi. You guys are all so quiet.
I make a motion to enter their executive session on the Mass General Law, Set Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the town hall, library, highway union, Freetown firefighters union, signal operators and Freetown police union, and educators association of Freetown because an open meeting law may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the public body. And it's, along with the chair so.
The chair so declares.
Make the motion.
I make.
Okay. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Not to return open question?
Not to return, it's open.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Selman? Mrs. Chico? Are you all set?
I am.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want me to read the second one or? Oh, because we're also accelerating up here.
Yeah.
Also for your Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, I make a motion if you go into executive session from Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one, three, to discuss strategies with respect to litigation if an open body meeting may have detrimental effect on litigation position of a public body and the chair so declares. Does the chair so declare?
Yes, so declares.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Selman?
Aye.
Mrs. Chico, yeah.